Senator Rovar?
Yes.
Sheila Schwartz?
Yes.
Mel Wessenberg?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 7-0 to go into executive session at 6:36. For the public watching, you will see a blank screen until we come out of executive session and resume our meeting.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to come out of executive session at 7:09?
So moved Sheila Schwartz.
Thanks Sheila, a second?
A second Diana.
Thanks Diana, I'll do a roll call vote Sarah Messing yes, Joe Bond?
Yes.
Art Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Sonya Lewis?
Yes.
Diana Revor?
Yes.
Sheila Schwartz?
Yes.
Mel Wessenberg?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to come out of executive session at 7:09. Welcome to our regular meeting for June 10th, I'm Sarah Messing, President of the Board of Education for Valley Central Schools. Due to the fact that we are in a state of emergency in regards to the coronavirus, our district offices are closed and we are practicing our social distancing. We have decided to hold our regular meeting online for the health and safety of our board members and our administration. There will be no public participation this evening and this meeting will be live streamed via our district YouTube page. I would like to take a second to introduce everyone on the call here. We have our Superintendent Mr. Exanthus, our Deputy Superintendent Mr. Bella Rosa, Assistant Superintendent Ms. Sarator, our Interim Business Official Mr. Conklin, our District Clerk Ellen McOldrick, our Director of Technology Chris Moore, and Board of Education members Vice President Joseph Bond and Trustee Martin Gerald, Sonya Lewis, Diana Revor, Sheila Schwartz, and Mel Wessenberg. Before we get started, I would like to say thank you again to Chris Moore, Director of Technology, for setting up this meeting and for streaming it. Yes, I'd like to take a moment to stand and say the pledge. Thank you, first item on our agenda is correspondence, Mr. Exanthus.
Thanks Mrs. Messing, just a couple of things we have for correspondence. Acknowledged receipt of an email to the high school principal Jamie Ginda Baxter from a father of high school graduate, expressing his appreciation for the Not Your Ordinary Cap and Gown Pickup Event on Friday, June 5th. He wrote, "I was hoping you could share this with your faculty and staff and Board of Education. Yesterday was amazing, I know during this difficult time, we have received many complaints and concerns when it comes to celebrating our class of 2020. As a parent of a graduate, I just wanted all you to know how grateful my family is. Not only for what they did yesterday, for everything you've done since this whole mess has started. You could have easily just set up a tent, handed out gowns, instead you put on an awesome event that these students will remember forever. I have not seen my son smile like that in quite a while. To see yesterday made me so happy. I just wanted all of you to know is because of your hard work and dedication. So again, thanks you for everything that you've done for my son as well as all the plans you have made for the future." Another one was sent to Assistant Superintendent Ms. Sarator and this one said, "I want to thank you for all the work and helping the children continue to learn throughout the closure this year. I think VC did a great job in organizing a system that worked for everyone involved. I have to tell you that my children's teachers did an amazing job. We have been so impressed by the professional lessons developed by Mrs. Kate Brown, Mrs. Kelly, Mrs. Dunneven, and Mrs. DeMaro. They have continued to keep their kids engaged in learning. Zern has been very beneficial for learning math, and that must be a software product. The way the program incorporates its fluency spirits, instruction, and model is fantastic. I really hope that the district will continue to subscribe to such a great resource." Mrs. Malli and Mrs. Elliott provided really creative and meaningful experiences for the kids as well. One more here, acknowledged receipt of an email from Board of Education from a teacher and faculty member expressing her appreciation for your Not Your Ordinary Cap and Gown Pickup on June 5th. As you know, I'm proud staff member of Valley Central District, but first and foremost, I'm a parent. Due to the circumstance beyond the district control, both our children had so many disappointments. Our oldest is a senior and our youngest is a fifth grader, both graduating from their prospective schools. Thankfully, the district has been doing amazing events to ensure that the graduating seniors of the class of 2020 are recognized and not forgotten. The events for the Not So Ordinary Cap and Gown Pickup were beyond amazing and surpassed all of our expectations. I am one of the co-chairs of the All Night Grad and we were part of the celebration. Due to being able to be part of the festivities, I was able to see the happiness from the students as well as the parents. The happiness was on their faces was shown on mine as well. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone at the high school who is planning, carrying out all these events. Their hard work and dedication are reasons why I'm so happy they're raising our children here. Being a graduate of Valley Central, I've been blessed to be part of the form of graduation that VC puts on each year. I've seen the graduation ceremonies at other schools, but nothing beats a VC graduation. Now that the governor has given executive orders that socially distanced graduations, up to 150 people, will be allowed beginning June 26th, this makes me think that the graduation being planned for August 1st is going to be as amazing as every other graduation. Thank you for not only going above and beyond, but for understanding that the disappointment of the students have an experience in making lemonade out of lemons. Thank you to Jamie Ginda Baxter, thank you to senior class advisors, thank you to all the administration staff at the high school for being so incredibly amazing. And then I'll go right into accommodations if that's okay. Congratulations to Board of Education member Mrs. Sonya Lewis, who received the New York SB School Boards Association's Board Lifetime Achievement Award for Participation Leadership Development Opportunities totaling 500 points. Congratulations Mrs. Lewis. Thank you to our student representatives. We want to say thank you to Autumn Purcell, Carolyn Suikata, and Dan Harrington for their contributions this year. We wish them well as they pursue their college careers, thank you.
Thank you Mr. Exanthus and congratulations Sonya on that wonderful achievement.
Congrats Sonya.
The next item on the agenda is the proposed consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like removed from the consent agenda to vote on separately?
Yes.
Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
Yes. Sarah.
Sorry, my thing was... Sorry, my speaker was off, did I miss anything?
Yes Sarah, I would like to remove an item to vote on separately.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Under tenure number seven.
Okay. Is anyone else would like anything removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, nothing else, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as written minus number seven under tenure recommendations?
Joe, make a motion.
Thanks Joe.
I'll second, this is Art.
Thanks Art, I will do a roll call vote Sarah Messing yes, Joe Bond?
Yes.
Art Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Sonya Lewis?
Yes.
Diana Revor?
Yes.
Sheila Schwartz?
No.
Mel Wessenberg?
Yes.
Motion passes six one to approve the consent agenda, we will go to item seven under tenure recommendations. Can I get a motion to approve?
Joe, make a motion.
Thanks Joe, second?
This is, this is Art, I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
What is item seven, I don't see it listed numbered.
It's the seventh one down. Any other discussion? I will do a roll call vote Sarah yes, Joe?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Sonya?
Abstain.
Um, Diana?
Yes.
Sheila?
I'll abstain as well.
Mel?
Yeah.
Motion passes five two to approve. Thank you, I will turn it over to Mike Bella Rosa at this point. He would like to read the names into record for our tenure recipients.
Thank you, I just want to, because we can't meet in person, I just want to acknowledge the recipients and thank the board for supporting them. This is a big milestone in their career and a really important thing and we're very, very proud of these people. So just to read them into the record this evening, Maria Tracy Addington in elementary, Chris Coella, elementary education, Edith Colnham, Ally Riker, school counselor, Vincent Pateen, special education, Catherine Brown, elementary, Vanessa Rossi, elementary, Overdale C, Janine Lord in special education at Montgomery, Matthew Canino, our elementary school principal, Maria Taylor in art, Melissa Marino, elementary, Danielle Quatoni, elementary, Inwalden, Amanda Stork, elementary and special ed, Jacqueline Burns, ESL, Linda Pabon, Genovese, school social worker, Nicoleena Newell, special education, and Iris Rose, elementary. At the middle school, Justin Gloicich in music. And at the high school, Thomas Pilz, mathematics, Samantha Yule, family and consumer science, Patrick Kent, special education, Daryl Nelson, foreign language, Helen Mendez, English, Nicole Sparanzo, special education, Caitlin Weller, mathematics, Kaylee Gercio, special education, Kristen Becker, business, and for the district Christine Doretzky in math. Congratulations to all of these people, thank you.
Mike, would you mention, it's okay if I just mention, and I appreciate it, just to add if, Mrs. Messing you don't mind, I just wanted to thank the teachers' union. We have, I believe, the best mentor program if not, if just not in Orange County, probably in the state of New York. So it's a rigorous process that these teachers come through and they earn their stripes, they do a presentation before the board, which is, I often said, I think one of our best nights. So thank you for all the teachers who serve as mentors to train and counsel and advocate for these new teachers at Valley Central. It's a great program, we appreciate that and I think today, I know today is the fruits of your labor, so thank you. And thanks Mike for marrying up spearheading, I appreciate that.
If I can just also add, normally we have a night and unfortunately, we're not able to do that this year. But we will be inviting the, obviously the tenure recipients, our 25-year people to recognize and our retirees to our convocation day next fall. So, thank you sir.
Thank you and congratulations to our tenure recipients. Next on the agenda is reports, the first up is our superintendent's report, Mr. Exanthus.
Thank you Mrs. Messing. Today I just want to mention, I won't talk, speak about it, I don't know, maybe Mrs. Messing will speak a little bit more later or we'll give it to you when it's all done, but we started presentation of diplomas today. It runs through tomorrow, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Monday. We had 40 families show up today and pick up their diplomas. Pictures were taken, people were able to get out of their cars and take pictures as families and it was a very festive time and people were very, very appreciative of the opportunity to do that. And it's not certainly the same as we mentioned in my report about the being on the field and hopefully we'll get that chance on August 1st. But it's a very intimate way to meet with the families and to congratulate them and the smiles on their face I think told the story. So, and in my correspondence today, you heard a lot about this event that took place last week. So let me tell you a little bit when they picked up their captain gowns. On June 5th, a special celebration event was held at the high school for our graduating seniors. Seniors arrived in their cars and drove down Celebration Lane, AKA the bus lane. While remaining in their cars and driving through Celebration Lane, professional photographers and VC grads, Kately and Ben Jamison captured the moment as a keepsake for the graduates. Students received honor cords and a surprise from the All Night Grad Committee, provided their name. their name cards to the honorary announcers for use at graduation. Were given special gifts by the local florists, the secret garden, and a local bakery calculated confections also donated, and received military honor sashes and pins, and were greeted by the town of Montgomery Police Department and provided with a grab and grow, grab and go, excuse me, barbecue from the members of all the, for the members of all the, or from the members, excuse me, for all the emergency service departments that served the Valley Central School District. Social distancing was maintained for everyone's safety. It was a wonderful event. We thank all those who planned and participated and made this such a fun and safe event for our graduates, and I, I think you heard through the correspondence how well, correspondence, how well that was received by the community. And thank you for all the hard work to the high school and the all-night grad folks, all the people who make, are trying to make this special for our kids in tough times. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Sonia.
Is John going to mention anything about his letter that he put out to the community?
That's coming up.
Okay.
Mr. Bella Rosa is up next with the deputy superintendent's report.
Thank you, Sarah. I, just a couple of things I want to mention, given all of the, the adjustments that we needed to make, there's a lot of people that pitched in to, to make a lot of things possible for the district and, and the community. And I want to thank some people. First of all, the BCTA and the VCAA and all the secretarial employees of the district that volunteered to come and stuff ballots. They stuffed over 18,000 envelopes to get these ballots out, and then we have a number of people who have volunteered to canvass the ballots as well, and I want to say thank you to all of you. Ellen McGoldrick, Jen Thompson, everyone in Brad's office that has worked so hard on the budget and the election, and, and as the ballots are returned here to the office to organize and be ready to do the canvassing of the ballots, you know, just an awful lot of work on their part and a lot of tremendous dedication. Central office staff and building, building secretarial staff, what they've done through this, through the closure and helping us to meet the deadlines that we need to meet, you've all been tremendous. Our custodians, you know, they, they've been working right on through extra even, and Ryan has stepped up to do things well, well, you know, above, such as the ballots and helping with the food distribution. Speaking of that, our food service workers, certainly Eleanor Mills and Barbara Gravel, and also the YMCA of Middletown for providing the childcare. Teachers and administrators have stepped up to do the end-of-the-year celebrations and, and make the best of the situation, but I know how much the families appreciate the visits and the things that they were, they were able to do. Graduation itself for the class of 2020, Jamie Ginda Baxter, high school administration, Allison Simiskewitz, Felder Rodriguez, and Michael Conklin, and of course Patty Bear with everything that she's been able to do to, to publicize the things on media that have been happening. And, you know, the class of 2020, I want to say to you that, congratulations, and, you know, I really hope that your reunion, you remember that the thing that has been keeping you apart is also the thing that, that keeps you together, because your graduation class is, is a special group, and I think I have a feeling that yours is going to be, even though you can't all be together right now, but I think that this class will be very cohesive. And then finally, the community. I want to thank you for, you know, the guidance we've received, the positive support certainly from you, the patience that you've had, and, you know, I'll say, I think you did great, and I know we're not out of this yet, but, you know, it's, you've done, you know, made us really, really proud, and, and we appreciate everything. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bella Rosa. Next up is our assistant superintendent's report, Ms. Sarator.
Good evening. I wanted to take a few moments to provide the Board of Ed and the community with a summary of what has taken place over the past few weeks following the tragic death of George Floyd. I usually, my comments and my reports are usually quite short, so I ask you to please understand that this may take me a little while because it's such an important thing for us to talk about, and if you have any comments at the end, absolutely, we are looking forward to hearing them. As you know, all across the country, including here and the Valley Central School District, people of all colors and ages have been exercising their constitutional right to speak out against racial injustice. Valley Central recognizes that institutional racism exists within the district, just as it exists all throughout society. So on behalf of Valley Central, I would like to state that we are dedicated to listening carefully to the Valley Central community and moving forward collectively to make positive and lasting changes. I'd like to go through the events that have happened over the past few weeks. So over the past several weeks, Valley Central has received numerous complaints from students and families in regard to racism in the district. In addition, parents, students, and former students have sent us screenshots of several racist and disturbing recent and not recent social media posts from Valley Central students that have been circulating online through emails and text messages. On June 1st, the district sent out a statement to inform the community that the district was working with local law enforcement and is following up with families at this time. In addition, it is important to note that we are not at liberty to discuss discipline matters with the public, as that would be a violation of New York State education law. However, with that being said, it is imperative for the community to know that the district will not tolerate hateful and discriminatory speech or threats of violence. It is not just lip service when we say we are committed to confronting racism in all forms, and we are very well aware that this is an effort that will take time, commitment, perseverance, and above all, unity. On June 2nd, I reached out to Jess LeBlanc, who is our consultant for culturally inclusive instruction. He has been working this year as the middle school, at the middle school, with staff and students to improve the climate in the building and to assist us in building more culturally inclusive instruction. I think that it's important to note that Mr. LeBlanc is a man of color, he's an African American, and, and one of the reasons for reaching out to him was that, as I said to him, is that I would like to do what the right thing is, but however, I cannot guarantee that at that time I knew what that was, and I reached out to him for guidance. After speaking with him, he, he reached, I reached out to a small group of African American parents and students simply to listen to their concerns and to listen to their stories. That was his suggestion. Our first meeting with this group took place on June 4th. The group consisted of parents and students of color, the two teachers of color that we have at Valley Central, our two African American teachers, Mr. Kurland, who is a teacher at the high school who oversees the cultural diversity club and teaches the race identity and justice elective, Mr. Exanthus, and myself. I will be happy to share the notes from this meeting with the Board of Ed, but in summary, it was disturbing to me and the superintendent as well that our students of color felt as though they did not have a voice, and they did not always feel safe or heard at Valley Central to be who they are. In addition, many suggestions and ideas were discussed as to how we can and how we should improve. The group of parents, students, and teachers will be a part of our school and community racial equity and education committee. It has been decided that the committee should be kept at 30 people. This was a decision that was made by this initial group, as it is difficult to stay focused when a committee becomes too large. We will need a member of the Board of Ed to be part of this committee. We have also asked the newly formed social media group, VC Parents for Social Justice, to have one of their founders join this committee. One goal of this committee is to better understand and respond to the issues of racism that exist in society and here at Valley Central. Racism is deeply embedded into our culture, and it will take the education of all of the VC community in order to make any significant and lasting changes to curricula and policy. After the initial meeting with parents and students, a second message was sent out from the superintendent to our community, which was in response to what he heard from these parents and students, as well as others in the community. It has been noted that Valley Central students are in need of hearing from their teachers and guidance counselors. I am aware that central office administrators, high school administrators, all of our administrators, building administrators, guidance counselors, and student assistance counselors have been reaching out to students. However, we are making plans to increase this effort based on feedback from the students and parents. We are currently working on drafting a survey for students and teachers, and once that is finalized, we will plan to send it out to the community in order to look at data and determine where our immediate priorities are. Currently, I am in discussions with Mr. Kurland about offering a summer professional development for our educators. We are also looking at ways that we can collectively examine our curricula, materials, and content standards, determine if they reflect the diverse backgrounds and histories of all of our students. Whatever gaps we find will need to be addressed in a systematic and thorough manner. We will also be working with Dr. LeBlanc to determine how we can attract people of color to the Valley Central School District in our hiring process. We are aware that the lack of people of color in administrative, teaching, and support staff is of significant concern. We have made attempts in the past to address this issue, however, we need to do a better job, and we are going to ask for assistance in modifying our hiring practice to attract and retain a more diverse workforce. In closing, I would like to say that I have been at Valley Central for 18 years, and I can tell you that I was not truly aware of the intense level of frustration, anger, and sadness that our children and our families of color have been experiencing. I can also tell you that in the last week, I have learned a great deal, but more importantly, I have been humbled to know how much more I need to learn, which I think many of us can say. One member of the committee explained to me that although she believes that we may think we are doing the right thing in regards to PD and workshops and other types of assemblies on tolerance and diversity, it often feels like it falls short, and I can honestly say that I very much appreciate this honest, candid conversation, and I am looking forward to having more of those. The school and community racial equity and education committee will serve as an advisory group in reviewing existing practices and policies, data, feedback, and more, in order to make positive changes for our children of color and our entire community. I firmly believe that this can only be accomplished if we work together thoughtfully and respectfully. And over the past few days at the protests that I have attended, that is the message I have been hearing everywhere that I go, that this can only be accomplished through unity. I am confident that we can and we will make the changes, and I appreciate the support of the Valley Central Board of Education, and I welcome the opportunity to work with all of you in unity so that we can make the changes that this community desperately needs.
Thank you, Ms. Sarator. Do any of the board members have any comments?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Sonia.
Thank you for your statement, Ms. Sarator. I'm glad to know that there was a committee started and that you, that the district is looking, is moving forward to make some positive changes in this district to address the shortcomings that there have been in regards to these issues. I would ask that the board be updated on the changes that the district is, is doing. And I'm also wondering if there is any type of timeframe that some of these changes are going to be made. In other words, like, if you're looking at curriculum, are we looking at that for this coming school year? And is this committee going to be over the summer as well?
Thank you, Mrs. Lewis. So absolutely. As far as the timeframe, this committee decided the other day that they would actually like to be meeting weekly, and that would go throughout the summer. So right now, what I am attempting to do is send out a survey. We still are looking for a few more members to make sure that we have representation K-12 and in all of the different villages and East Coltonham area. So we, I think we are just, need a few more members. We're going to put dates together so that right now we're meeting, we will be meeting every week. And absolutely, I've already met with Mrs. Ginda Baxter to talk about making sure that the world issues course is run and making some changes to that as well. We've talked about writing the freshman seminar curriculum this summer so that we can include pieces for every ninth grade in relation to racism, sexism. The kids did talk about wanting to have a specific course specifically for anti-racism. That, I don't think that we would be able to start that, that course in the fall, but that, we are looking into that. Really, what we're going to do is put this in priority order and look at things that we can change quickly, and then, as I said, other things will take longer. I would rather take the time to make sure that I'm doing this right and that I'm not just checking off a box to say that we did something, but that we actually do it and that we're doing it right. But absolutely, we are going to be working with Jess this summer. He's going to be training all of the Valley Central administrators, so we've already set that in place. We've already put in place for Mr. Kurland to begin working on a professional development so that teachers can sign up for a three-hour course this summer. So absolutely, some of these things are going to happen immediately, and some of them are going, like evaluating the curriculum, it has to be done through a specific process, so that may take a little bit longer. But evaluating what type of literature we have, that could be something that could happen quicker. And as far as you said about updating the board, absolutely, and there will absolutely need to be some things that the board will have, will need to be voting on and approving, so absolutely, the board will be involved. And as I said, we would very much like to have a member of the board on this committee.
For the... I... I'm sorry. I was just going to ask, you said that there was going to be...
I can't hear that.
One second.
My speaker is not on, okay.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
It's not, I don't have it on.
The three-hour course that you said for, for staff and for teachers?
Sonia? One second, I'm having a problem here. Give me one minute, please.
It's okay. So the, the three-hour course that you said that was going to be over the summer for teachers and staff, I assume that's not just for teachers, that's for all staff? And is that going to be optional or required? Because I think it should be required.
So... So the one that we are planning over the summer would be a optional, that he would not be able to train. This is a small group workshop, that it's not intended for like large groups, and plus over the summer, because of the regulations with COVID, we would never be able to, but I absolutely agree that there should be some type of instruction for work, some type of professional development for all teachers and for all staff members. And as I've said, the administrators will be trained, and we will start to put these things in place. But one of the things that Mr. Kurland and some of the people on the committee said is that it's sometimes it's best to provide professional development for the teachers who are eager to hear it and to accept it and to learn from it, and that they can serve as turnkey trainers for the rest of our staff. So we, there is a method that works better than others, but I can absolutely tell you that we do intend to put a plan in place so all members of the Valley Central School District are getting some type of training.
I was just thinking perhaps maybe something for convocation.
Can you say that again? Convocation?
I was thinking that perhaps also something for convocation.
Yes, and as we've said, and is that with COVID-19... Yes, and as we've said, is that with COVID-19, we're just not, I mean, one of the things that we are in the process of is developing a reopening plan. We don't have a great deal of guidance from the governor on that yet. He said he would provide it in June. So it, depending on what convocation looks like, absolutely, there's a possibility that that could be used for this. And we'll keep that in mind. We're just not sure yet that we'll be able to bring everybody together all at once.
Sarah, can I ask a question? This is Sheila.
Sure, Sheila, go ahead.
Mary Ann, I know in the past outside agencies such as the Office of Human Rights and various like Orange County, you know, their office and stuff have reached out to us. With this committee and just in general with all of this going on, have we reached out to those outside agencies to see what support they can offer our school? And what tools they may be able to offer as we're trying to change some of these things and change these things going on in the district?
So again, it's important to note that I am just the facilitator of this committee. And it's important to hear from the African-American and the Hispanic community on what they're, what they feel we should do. Because sometimes they've told me that what we think we should do as white Americans is not exactly what we should be doing. So again, this committee is going to advise us on what organizations they think we should look into. As I can tell you right now that many members have reached out, they have provided me with resources. And I will be glad to put those all together and share them with the board. But that has not been one of the agencies that they have asked me to look into, but I've provided me with a great deal of resources. But I'm grateful to come from them and not from the district.
Okay. I know many schools that have gone through other, similar instances of racism out in their own communities have accepted the help from the Office of Human Rights and other agencies. And they may have something to offer. I don't think that it's a bad idea for the district to reach out to those agencies to seek guidance as well.
I would be more than happy to let the committee know that you have suggested that. And I would be more than happy to hear what they have to say about that. And if they would like us to reach out to those organizations, we would be more than happy to do so.
I think, sorry, Sarah. Also, in the hiring of more diverse teaching, I've brought up before, I don't know if this is, has come up at all in the recommendation. I understand you're taking recommendation from the committee. But for hiring, you know, I've said before that maybe we should reach out to historic black colleges to see if they have people who are looking for teaching positions that might come to Valley Central.
That was actually was spoken about in the meeting. I believe I did say that, that that was an area that came up at the first meeting and that the children and the parents have said that we need to do a better job at hiring people of color. That was a conversation that I had with Mr. LeBlanc early in the school year. And absolutely, that suggestion is going to, well, black colleges or just different colleges than the ones we typically go to, like Hunter and Dominican. Absolutely, we will have to put a plan together to actually sell Valley Central and and try to get more people of color to want to come and work here. There have not been a lot of positions open in Valley Central recently and this year coming up. I wish we did have more, but absolutely for every position that we do have open, we are going to be putting a plan into place to entice a more diverse population to come and work here at Valley Central. We absolutely believe that it's something that needs to happen.
Ms. Sarator, would you like, I don't know your timeframe, would you like to appoint a board member now? Or is that something that would wait to our reorganizational meeting?
That's definitely up to the board. Did you want to discuss that?
I think that would be a great thing to have during our reorganization meeting. Fax together and then we can put in our candidate.
I actually disagree. I think that already meeting that we should appoint a board member now. So that while this is meeting, that a board member can be there to understand the process through this whole discussion.
So the only thing I will say that it's June 10th. So I would say that we will probably only have one meeting before the reorg, if that makes a difference to any of the board members. And we still are trying to get more people from the community, so the committee is not whole as of yet.
This is Mel. I agree with Art.
Anybody else have any opinions?
Yeah, this is Joe. I agree we should wait for reorg because then, you know, first of all, we have an election going on. Second of all, you know, reorg, we balance out, you know, I have two meetings, you have two meetings and so on. So I think, you know, for the sake of whatever it is, a couple of weeks, you know, I'd rather wait than appoint somebody and then have to change that person two weeks from now.
Well, I would agree with that too, Joe. The only thing I would say is that if board members are interested in attending any meetings that you have until such time as the reorg, they should be allowed to come and be engaged in that committee as well. Until we appoint a board member.
I think that I would be more comfortable bringing that suggestion to the group because I don't want to, I mean, I told them that I wouldn't make decisions for them. As I said, I do, will share the notes from our first meeting with you and I'd be happy to share all the notes from the next meeting that comes up, but I'm not sure if five members of the board wanted to come to a meeting that the group would feel comfortable. So I would rather be able to ask the group how they feel about that.
I understand that, but I also don't feel that the board should be kept out of these conversations. I think that the board who sets policy, we need to be involved in these conversations.
Diana, you have any thoughts? Turn your mic on.
I'm okay with waiting for reorganization.
Okay. All right, so we will, Mary Ann will go to her committee and ask them about any board members being a part of it before our reorganization, but we will plan to appoint a board member at our reorganizational meeting.
I'd just like to say that I'm very disappointed that the board does not want to be more proactive in this discussion. Very disappointed.
I would agree.
Anybody else have anything further? Ms. Sarator, do you have anything further for your reports? No? Okay. Thank you. We look forward to hearing.
I do, I'm sorry, I do want to make one thing because I don't know who is watching our meeting. A second ago, whenever we were talking about board members joining and then everybody decided we'll wait till the reorg, I really am upset to sit here and watch on screen Joe Bonn laughing over it. This is a very serious matter. So board members should be very careful on their facial expressions during our meeting. That's very upsetting to me.
I'm sorry, that was upsetting to you, and I'm sorry that you do not like my facial expressions.
We will move along to reports. We have the interim school business officials report. Mr. Conklin.
Thank you, Ms. Messing. Not much for me tonight. So on Sunday, the governor issued an update to the budget vote and election extending the time period for votes to be received by the district via mail only to 5:00 PM on Tuesday, June 16th. So election inspectors will be tallying the votes the following day, Wednesday, June 17th, and results will be released on our website. And today, the governor released his latest executive order in regards to the budget vote and election. He said in the event that the original budget proposed by a school district is not approved by the voters at an election held on June 9, 2020 pursuant to Executive Order 202.26, any resubmission to the voters of the original or revised budget shall be conducted at a date and by a process determined by and subject to a future executive order. Provided however, such revote shall not occur prior to July 9, 2020. And in the mail today, we received notice that the town of Montgomery IDA will be holding a public hearing on an approximate 26-acre solar project on June 22nd at 3:00 PM. And members of the public may email or call in with questions. The application is on file at www.mccameryida.com. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Conklin. We will move on to old business at this point. First item is the second and final reading of six policies and regulations. I will, these policies, along with the sexual harassment policy 0110, 0110 dot 1, 0110 dot 2, and regulation 0110 dash R were presented for a first reading at the May 20th board meeting. A few days after that meeting, we were notified by our attorneys that SED had issued final regulations regarding a district's obligation under Title IX with regard to sexual harassment. Those regulations will take effect August 14th. As a result, we have removed the four revised sexual harassment policies and regulations from the list presented for a second and final reading at this meeting. And they will be presented at an upcoming board meeting for further review and revision. Does the board wish that I review the other policies again? We went over them at the last meeting.
Sarah, I think that it would be good for you to review them.
Sure. No problem. Honor rolls policy 4740 and regulation 4740 dash R. This policy was revised to remove the honor rolls at the elementary level. The requirements for the secondary honor rolls were incorporated into the policy itself, so we will remove the regulation. Student records policy 5500 and regulation 5500 dash R. This policy and regulation were revised to be in accordance with the revised data privacy policy and regulation. A change was made to the regulation to comply with education law 2D, which requires that the district take steps to verify the identity of the individual requesting student records. Information and data privacy security breach notification policy 8635 and regulation 8635 dash R. Our policy and regulation have been revised to comport with education law 2D. Under the new regulations, the districts are required to establish a data security and privacy policy by July 1st. This policy must include all the protections afforded to parents or eligible students under FERPA and the Individuals with Disability Education Act and any corresponding regulations. This policy must also include the district's standards for data, security, and privacy. So those are the six policies and regulations. Does anyone have any objection to voting on these all together? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve the policies and regulations listed?
So moved. This is Sheila.
Thank you, Sheila. Can I get a second?
This is Art.
Thanks. Any discussion? I will do a roll call vote. Sarah Messing, yes. Joe Bonn?
Yes.
Art Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Sonya Lewis?
Yes.
Diana Revore?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Thank you. Mel?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 7-0. We will move on to new business. We have the draft Board of Education schedule of meetings for 2020, 2021. This is for the board's information. As you know, the final draft will be included for the board's approval in the reorganizational meeting. New business, item B, is the approval of an independent contract renewal for Allen Associates. This is for the policy maintenance services. Can I get a motion to approve?
This is Joe. I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Joe. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Diana. Any discussion? I will do a roll call vote. Sarah Messing, yes. Joe Bonn?
Yes.
Art Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Sonya Lewis?
Yes.
Diana Revore?
Yes.
Sheila Schwartz?
Yes.
Mel Wessenberg?
Yeah.
Motion passes 7-0. Next on the agenda is the approval of an agreement between Valley Central School District and J&amp;D Ultra Care. This is an extension of an agreement for nursing services provided to one of our students for their IEP. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thanks, Sheila. Second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Joe. Any discussion? I will do a roll call vote. Sarah Messing, yes. Joe Bonn?
Yes.
Art Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Sonya Lewis?
Yes.
Diana Revore?
Yes.
Sheila Schwartz?
Yes.
Mel Wessenberg?
Yeah.
Thank you. Motion passes 7-0. Next up is review of curricula. As a reminder, the approval of course curricula is a two-step process. It will be available for your review in the Office of Curriculum and Instruction. And we will seek the board's approval on July 6th for the following curricula, Grade 8 Science, Digital Electronics and Robotics, Work-Based Learning, Financial Accounting 153, and World Issues. Next on the agenda is item E, Approval of Curriculum Writing for Secondary Education, Secondary Physical Education, Grade 7 Math for work that to be done this summer, this summer pending the budget. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Diana. Second?
I'll second. Joe?
Thanks, Joe. Any discussion?
Sarah, I just have a question. Why, why do we do this over the summer month where it's costing us like $41 per person that we're appointing? It just seems like a lot, you know, like we're paying people during the year. Why aren't we doing this curriculum writing during the year?
Give me an answer. So that is in the contract that curriculum writing is $41 an hour, and I'm not sure if they were to do it after, when they would do it during the school day when they're, they have their teaching and they have and the cost of subs is quite expensive. So, and the kids would not be getting instruction from their teacher. So the reason we do it in the summertime is so that children aren't missing instruction and it's it's part of the contractual obligation.
That explains that.
When would you suggest that we do curriculum writing?
I'm not suggesting anything. I just wanted to know the monetary. Can you answer that question for me? You said it was contractual in the contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I will do a roll call vote. Sarah Messing, yes. Joe Bonn?
Yes, yes.
Art Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Sonya Lewis?
Yes.
Diana Revore?
Yes.
Sheila Schwartz?
Yes.
Mel Wessenberg?
Yeah.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Next up, uh, letter F is the approval of the ESA Accountability 2020-2021 Participation Rate Improvement Plan for Montgomery Elementary and the Middle School. Due to the low testing participation rate for these schools, we are required to submit improvement plans like SED. Once approved, uh, these adopted plans will be posted on the district's website and submitted to SED for approval. Can I get a motion to approve?
This is Joe, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Joe, can I get a second?
This is Art, I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion?
Um, just a quick question, because I had looked over the Montgomery Elementary School one, and it said, um, it was on the basis of students with disabilities and weight, and goes into several factors underneath. I'm just wondering why, um, some of our other schools such as Walden and East Holdenham, um, also haven't had to have a, uh, participation rate in student plans? Like, they don't meet any of the economic benefits or anything like that?
The state determines who has to do a, um, improvement plan, so the state looks at all of the data, and the lowest, uh, the 10 lowest, the percentage, the lowest percentage of schools in New York State are asked to provide an improvement plan, so only the schools in the Valley Central School District that were mandated by the state of New York to provide an improvement plan had to submit one. However, with that being said, absolutely, the plan that Montgomery has put together will be shared with all of the elementary schools, and we will most likely implement most of those measures in all of the buildings, but it's just Montgomery that we were mandated to provide a plan.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah, I have a question for Ms. Sarator.
Yes.
This is Mel, um, this is a participation rate improvement plan. So those parents who are choosing not to have their children take the test by their own decision, the state is telling, "We need to brainwash them to make them do what they want," and you want, is that correct?
So, Mel, it's a mandate from the state, I think you know that they have this 95% participation rate that they're trying to get us all to, um, move towards, and whether or not we agree with that from the state, we are mandated if they, if they ask us to provide a participation rate improvement plan to, to do so. So Mrs. Coleman, Tammy Coleman, um, she headed this group, it was a group of probably about 20 teachers, um, and administrators that put the plan together. Um, so actually, what the plan is trying to do is get the participation rate for the Valley Central School District to, um, improve.
And so the second question is, what happens if we don't approve this? Is there monetary penalties or such?
Well, the state at this time has not said that, they have not made that clear.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I will do a roll call vote, Sarah Messing, yes, Joe Bonn?
Yes.
Art Fitzgerald?
Art?
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Sonia Lewis?
Yes.
Diana Revore?
Yes.
Sheila Schwartz?
Yes.
Mel Wessenberg?
No.
Motion passes 6-1. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of a resolution, Student 2020 dash 1 Discipline Appeal. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Valley Central School District does hereby uphold the superintendent's decision and suspension of student number 2020 dash 1 issued pursuant to Education Law 3214 Superintendent Hearing. Can I get a motion to approve?
This is Joe, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Joe, can I get a second?
This is Art, I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Yeah, I have a, um, I just have a comment, I just think that the board needs to review our disciplinary measures that we have in the system, and look at more restorative justice, um, to wipe away, kind of demolish 13 years of experience, one incident, and the discussion.
Any other discussion?
I think we really need to look at our policies we put forth in our reorganization meeting, we really fine-toothed those before we approve them next year.
Any further discussion?
I would also agree with that statement.
I will do a roll call vote, Sarah Messing, yes?
Sheila, I can't hear you at all. I said, what are you voting on?
We're voting to uphold the, the superintendent's decision.
Thank you.
Joe Bonn?
Yes.
Art Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Sonia Lewis?
No.
Diana Revore?
Yes.
Sheila Schwartz?
No.
Mel Wessenberg?
No.
Motion passes 4-3 to uphold the superintendent's decision. Um, before we adjourn, um, I believe we're probably going to need to establish a special meeting next week to accept the results of our election. Um, you guys were counting Wednesday? Okay, we're gonna, they are going to count the votes Wednesday, the 17th, so I'm wondering if we could establish a special meeting for Thursday, June 18th at 6:00 PM.
Will we be doing a live?
Sheila, I can't make out what you're saying, I'm sorry.
Will, will there be a live ballot count on the 17th?
Will there be a live ballot count on the 17th, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Not counting dead people, are we?
Yes, it, it will be livestreamed.
Thank you.
Is everyone available for Thursday, June 18th at 6:00 PM? Is there anybody not available for Thursday, June 18th?
Hold on one second, Carol.
Okay.
I'm not available that day.
I'm fine with that date.
Okay. Everybody else? Are we okay to go? Okay, so can I, um, ask for a motion to establish a special meeting for Thursday, June 18th at 6:00 PM?
So moved.
So moved.
Sheila, I'll take a second for Mel. I will do a roll call vote, Sarah, yes, Joe?
Yes.
Art Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Sonia Lewis?
Yes.
Diana Revore?
Yes.
Mel Wessenberg?
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes 7-0 to establish a special meeting for Thursday, June 18th at 6:00 PM. There's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Sarah? Sarah?
Yes, go ahead, Sonia.
Um, I just wanted to go back again, um, I understand that the board already voted on it, but I just wanted to say that the fact that this board does not want to put a board member on the committee now, after they've already met twice, and we won't have a reorg meeting almost a month from now, um, I just wanted to say again that I'm really disappointed that this board does not see the urgency of what's going on in our community right now, and is okay with not being involved now and sitting back and waiting.
Sarah, I, I will offer to be an interim member, uh, until the reorg meeting, and then, you know, if, if that works, I don't know if anybody else?
Sheila, I'm having a hard time hearing you, your connection, I'm sorry.
I'll second Joe as being the, uh, stand-in.
Sheila?
I said I would be interested as well, so it can be pointed at the reorg in Charlotte.
Is there anybody else that's interested?
I have no clue what was just said.
Joe is interested in being an interim member till our reorg meeting, and Sheila is as well.
I'm not particularly fond of either one being on the meeting.
Do you have another idea, Mel?
I stand by what I said, I think, please to the reorg meeting.
Can I ask when the next meeting is?
So, I am in the process of sending out a survey to all the members, because they asked that I send out a survey, asking them what the best day and time is, because we're, it's going to be the same day and time every week, so I am in the process of putting that together, that should go out tomorrow, so I would say the next meeting is going to be next week at some point, probably after the budget vote.
Hey, this is Art.
I would think would be the next meeting.
Sorry, Marianne, um, I think it's very important to wait for the committee to decide whether or not, um, if they want us there or not, um, and there's no rush to put a committee member on there, let them make the decision, that's the whole basis of that committee, is to empower that group. So as the Board of Education, we're being invited to be there, we shouldn't be, um, thrusting ourselves in, into that meeting. So let's just take some steps, let's wait for the reorg, let's listen to their wants and needs, and not ours, and then move forward.
Yeah, so, you know, I certainly want anybody to think we're not being proactive by not attending, and, and maybe, Marianne, if, if you have your next meeting and feel the committee out on their thoughts, and then maybe we make a decision, uh, based, based on that, you know, I, again, I don't think anybody wants to come across as not being proactive, but, um, you know, maybe we need to wait and, and give it an opportunity.
Marianne?
I do have to report back to you at the meeting on the 18th.
I was actually, that was going to be my suggestion, um, I would actually prefer, Marianne, reach out to the committee, gauge their comfort level and wish, and report back to us on our special meeting on Thursday, June 18th, and, um, we can appoint somebody then.
Yeah, I think that's a good approach.
I agree with that.
Is everybody okay with that, if Marianne reaches out and lets us know, um, next week? That way we won't miss a meeting.
Okay.
I'm okay with waiting till next week, but my end, but, but from what Marianne said, the committee has already been advised that there would be a board member on this committee, so I'm confused about why we have to wait to hear about that if that was already the decision.
Sonia, that's not quite true, I said that I felt a board member should be on it, that was not something that came up at all from any of the committee members, but I would think that a member of the Board of Education should be on a committee as such as this. I have not yet had a chance to, um, talk to the committee about that, so that did not come from the committee, that came from, from me. So that's why I would like an opportunity to reach out to them and be able to discuss this with them, and then come back to you. And with the budget vote and the reorg and the, um, meeting next week, um, my, it's my, and their availability, my hope is that there'll be a meeting next week, but at this point, I, I can't confirm that.
If that's the case, that you haven't already discussed it with the committee, I'm okay with waiting until you discuss it with the committee, um, but then I suggest then we move forward after, if the, if the committee is okay with a board member being on it, that we move forward and not wait till the reorg meeting, I think there's way too many important conversations that will be missed, and I think by having a lack of, of board membership at the table, looks like we're not listening and we don't care.
Okay, thank you. We will, um, await, um, Ms. Sarator's report, um, next week, and we will make a decision on that. Is there anything further before we adjourn? Can I? Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Thanks, Sheila, second?
This is Joe, I'll second.
I'll take Art, I will do a roll call vote, Sarah Messing, yes, Joe Bonn?
Yes.
Art Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Sonia Lewis?
Yes.
Diana Revore?
Yes.
Sheila Schwartz?
Yes.
Mel Wessenberg?
Yeah.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0 to adjourn our meeting at 8:23. Uh, thank you to everyone for your continued hard work and dedication to Valley Central. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.